Dr. Rice, I can't hear anything now, if that matters.
Well, I muted it for just a second since we're not on the record.
Okay.
But thanks.
Alright, thank you.
You want to say the prayer real quick, or you want me to? Okay, alright.
Okay, I'll lead the prayer. Dear gracious and heavenly father, thank you for allowing us to gather here today. Um, thank you for letting us celebrate this recent 4th of July. Um, go with us this week and be with us as we make decisions for State's County Schools, students and staff. Um, in your name I pray, amen.
At this time I will call the July work session to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Messick. All those who present is important to take note.
Uh, Mr. Rogers?
Uh.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, ma'am.
You are very muffled in your audio. I don't know if I can get that fixed or not.
Is that better?
Just for video, if you will mute, I mean, turn your volumes down, I'll turn my volume up so we can use one computer so we don't get feedback.
Okay.
That would, that would be helpful because yes, there's a lot of feedback coming on.
Alright. Pardon me.
And Mr. Rogers, I was wondering if we could add an item to the end of the discussion, uh, diversity lessons. It's stemming from some emails we got this week and last week. One from the School Board Association.
I'm not sure I got one from the School Board Association. We're working on the technical issues, hold on.
I say we've made a motion and, um, voted on it as presented. Let's move on and share further info in that email, uh, this week, if that's alright.
Yeah.
I don't think we voted on it. I didn't hear us vote on it.
Well, we had a motion in a second. We need to vote first and then go back and if it doesn't pass, then we'll add one. Okay, alright, so I got two voted and I'm assuming you're, you're not voting, right, Katie? Not voting to go without adding it?
Correct.
Yeah. I'd rather just add it at the next one because we haven't had, I haven't seen the email yet. So, we will go with the most prepared. And then, uh, just send it to me, uh, how you want to word the, or the topic and then we'll go from that for the, uh, regular session.
That'll be fine.
Alright.
That's what I thought.
Want to say it over. Alright, joint session, uh, consent agenda. Approval of the agenda we've covered, consent agenda, joint session. Do we have anything on the consent or y'all good with the minutes?
Mr. Rogers, Cheryl Knight, make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, uh, minutes from items A, B, and C.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second, this is Pat Messick.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. Alright, at that point, uh, Ms. Knight, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms., uh, Messick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tatter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright, so move unanimous, discussion, discussion of the budget. Ms. Moore, would you like to walk us through that?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. In your packet, uh, you had just a review of where we started, the county manager's recommendation, and then the fact that the county manager came back with a second recommendation, and I'm referring to current expense at this time, and then the final approval by the county commissioners, and also I put in there how that compared to where we were compared to the year we've just ended, 1920. So, that review sheet's there, and also there was a review sheet the same way for capital outlay. But we had left it, we would come back and discuss current expense from our other meeting, and in your packet you had some recommendations that, uh, Dr. Rice, myself, we had sat down to think of ways that we could come up with the cut that we needed to, and we had had some discussion on that. So, if you want to look at the recommended, uh, budget cuts at this time, and basically that was cutting out your new request that you had in the budget, except it did leave the, uh, adjustment for classified employees based on years of experience still in there. We looked at possibly transferring some technology money to, which can be picked up with state and federal, uh, moving the contracted services for our resource officers to come out of carryover money at risk, cutting back utilities, and also the amount that we had budgeted for our yellow buses, cutting back on that one. And all, that would mean we would still appropriate $350,000, uh, to balance the budget. So, welcome any questions, or we'll go from those comments that I've made at this time.
Goodbye.
The appropriated funds to balance the budget, where does the 350 come from, Ms. Moore?
Okay, last year when we ended our audit, we had right at $305,000 in fund balance that carried over, not counting basically where we would stand from this school year that we've just finished. And because of the COVID and the fact of us not operating as normal, we had savings throughout from basically a lot in utilities, our substitute costs, there's just different areas, and basically most of it is coming from the result of our operations changing this past school year.
Okay, um, one more, um, just comment is, um, when Mr. Rogers had shared with us the email about, um, the concern of the county and being behind the fire, um, fighter class position, and I just wanted to make the recommendation that given the tightness of the current budget and not knowing what will hold with the state, um, reviewing this position in October when the commissioners review their funding and hopefully get the funding then to proceed in January, um, for this, for this position, um, and just kind of meeting with them if everyone's on board, um, to do it, just so we have a better understanding of what, um, our overall, uh, situation is with the county and also not knowing what we'll face with the state.
And at this time, that position is, is not included, uh, with the rec, we're recommending that as a cut at this time in what you're looking at.
Right, and I'm just saying if we can meet with those commissioners in October, um, they've mentioned a second, uh, reevaluation of their budget come October, um, and maybe proceed with it then.
So, you have, okay. Alright, Ms. Messick?
Um, well, I've looked over this, uh, current expense, um, expense, budget cuts, and, um, I feel like that, you know, it looks pretty fair to me. Um, I do want to save the firefighter position if possible, and I know that's, you know, has been cut, but I think it would mean a lot to, uh, future students in the high schools. I feel like that, um, it'd be, um, a big interest to students, and I think it'd be worthwhile and, um, help our community in the long run if we can just grow our own firefighters. Um, so, um, I'm fine with the budget cuts for right now.
There, Ms. Tatter?
I don't see anything different than what we discussed at the last meeting, there, that there was no, no changes, right, Lynette?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Yeah, what you reported on is what we expected to have today.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose, uh, if we waited till October, could you launch it by January?
It would be tight on getting, you know, the enrollments, uh, lined up at that point, but it is doable. My biggest concern would be getting a certified instructor.
So, then, Dr. Rice, I mean, according, I, I spoke with Ms., uh, Ms. Moore, and we could potentially fund it. My conversations were with the two county commissioners and the county manager in their office, and they thought they had funded it, and then the county manager said, no, we just sent them a pot of money. So, the two I spoke to said, yeah, we thought we had, but we'll find it. They were trying to find a way just to cut a, see if they could come back and put, put a supplement in just directly funded it if we couldn't in October, but I'm thinking the timeframe may be a little tight for you to get everything rolling. I put, it's something they want, they want to do. I don't want to get back into the, well, we gave you a pot of money thinking we had funded the fourth set and then caused issues later on. But, I mean, this time we're eyes wide open and everything's going. Ms. Moore, do you think we can afford the $34,000 if we so chose to do so?
You would increase the amount that you would appropriate for fund balance, and the negative side of that would be when you appropriate fund balance, you've got to think about the next year. Would the fund balance be there to continue funding those items? That's, that's the negative. Uh, but yes, you can add additional money to your fund balance. Right now, I am estimating we'll have somewhere between $475,000 to $500,000, uh, fund balance, and I'm saying that, that we have a lot of payables still out. I still have another month's of electrical, uh, to at least come in, so, but that's kind of where we stand, and that, you had the 305 from the audit, so it's just a matter of how much the board's willing to appropriate fund balance to balance the budget. And then I guess the other thing to think about too, and Dr. Rice can comment on this, would be not knowing exactly what we are planning for starting school. Can we get a new program going in the right direction and with the unknowns at this time? And Dr. Rice, you might want to respond to that.
Well, a, and that's something Mr. Rose and I have talked about, n, again, with the governor's three plans of, one, everybody being back. Of course, if that's the case, we have a, a great opportunity to advertise, to set up class meetings about it, to talk to people about it. If it's A day, B day, we could still get it done. If the governor were to start us off and see where no one's in our buildings, it would be more difficult to get the advertisement out because you can send out emails, texts, phone calls, but face to face is usually the best for kids. And so, that is a risk. One thing, a, and again, Mr. Rose could probably speak to this and Ms. Jessup possibly as well, it may be something, could we put it in and then see how the commissioners' review of the budget goes in October? And then if something is drastically happening that's going to, you know, them not be able to help, or, you know, worst case scenario, we see a, a major downfall at that point, could we make a decision, you know, make a decision now for staffing wise and to see what we're going to do with advertising? But then if things are not going well and financially, or we're not having our kids back, maybe at that time look to hit a pause button to, and I know if we're interviewing before that and we want to do that as fast as possible, but just do it contingent upon a position, but I don't know how much that may hurt our candidate pool. Um, Mr. Rose, do you have any thoughts about maybe proceeding in that regard?
You know, I agree with everything that you said as far as advertising for the position. Um, and, and it sounds, you know, like a feasible plan. The other concern that I have is this is going to be a real hands-on class, and I think next year, I mean, we have no way of predicting what it's going to look like, but it's going to be extremely fluid if I had to guess, um, between the phases that we're going to be in. I see this being sort of like our carpentry position. There's a lot of hands-on, um, it's going to be a brand-new teacher. The, the unknowns of next year concern me everywhere, but particularly in starting a new program.
Mr. Rose, how much, other than the personnel, how much equipment planning turnaround time do you need to make it happen? Uh, I mean, I don't know what all the equipment needs you have, uh, I know the county had talked about loaning us some things to let us do it, but i, is there a lot of purchasing things that we need to do and timeframes with that? Wha, what are your ideas?
So, what we've got planned for the spring was just public safety one. That one does not have a long list of requirements. Once we move into the firefighter full-time the following year, that's when we'll run into some expense, but we met with the fire departments, um, when we all had that meeting with, with David Barber from, uh, the state CTE department, and we had our fire departments in, they, uh, they voiced that they would be extremely good partners with us and we can borrow equipment. Uh, we also had a company there that would provide a tremendous amount of support. The thing that I had planned on doing, um, we would go ahead and build the, the prop shops next year because that's a carpentry project. So, we would have our carpentry programs to build the prop shop, but again, we wouldn't need those until '21, '22. So, there's not a great deal of expense for next year. Uh, it would actually be the following year when we kick into more of the firefighter instead of the public safety.
So, would it be feasible to add this item to the budget now? Advertise, interview for the position, but not, but not plan on approving that, you know, delay interviews or whatever until mid-October, late October, till we get that feedback from the county? And then if we see that we can't do it, we haven't had students, we haven't been able to advertise it, just put it on hold at that point? But if we're in school, we see that, you know what, they're going to let us go to school, we're going to be able to do our hands-on classes, then be able to proceed and not wait till October to make a decision, but kind of start the process today, but be able to pull the plug on it if we needed to.
I think that sounds like a good idea, you know, just we'd have to be very upfront with the candidates that we interview, um, not to make any drastic changes until we have the, the full information in October.
Well, and these are part-time temporary, this is a part-time temporary for the first six months, correct?
No, once we hire them in January, they would be a full-time teacher starting in January.
Is there any way to shift them to part-time? Depending on the talent goal, uh, so we had two retired firefighters that just want to do it part-time. One teaches one place, one teaches the other before we go full speed.
I could see what kind of applicants, you know, we received, or we could try advertising it that way first. I would love to be able to go ahead and get a lock on a solid instructor, you know, to, to begin the program, because, you know, when we start next fall, if we aren't able to do this in the spring and we start next fall, we're going to want a full-time instructor starting that year. And if they had the experience to go ahead and start getting to know the students who are going to move from public safety one to firefighter one, um, you know, I'd love to go ahead and start building those relationships in the spring and, you know, show full commitment to the program.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it launched or get the ball rolling that we can still stop the ball in October if we need to. Depending on what our COVID situation is, so.
If we advertised and then interviewed late September, early October, and just, you know, see what our pool is, see what we're doing, uh, as far as school goes with our kids, then before we actually offered positions, you know, we could, we could see where we are at that point. And, and so, I would suggest putting it in the budget and getting going, but then with the understanding that if we're Phase C, beginning of the year, looks like till Christmas, that just the advertising of it, and again, starting that type of hands-on program all online with a new instructor, trying to do online courses, might not be the best timing to do that.
Question. Um, or Dr. Rice, at what point might we have an idea of cuts from the state? I just, you know, like we all don't want to get in tough positions there. We keep hearing from our state treasurer, you know, pretty significant percentage-wise of cuts overall, but...
Ms. Moore, have any of your webinars talked about state funding, or what, what are they saying for you to that?
At this point, no, they're more concerned about getting the year closed out, so it's all up to when legislation makes their final decisions, and you know that varies from year to year. Um, so at this point, nothing has really been said about where we might stand for another year.
And the wording that I'm hearing is that if they did not approve last year's budget, then they would not approve this year's budget? And it would be next spring before we ever had an approved budget? And at that point, Ms. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's to proceed as the previous, as the last approved budget?
Correct, and just to give you an example, we have recently received three different rates for matching retirement. It's, it, it's just changing constantly, so there are just, there's so much unknown at this time, but I think what your statement you said would be correct.
And the last approved budget we have is the 1819 budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we are already went a full school year without an approved budget?
Right.
From the state? From the 1819 school year?
Well, they can agree on a budget, they can't cut one. Okay, so, that ends the discussion point. At this time, I'll open it up if y'all want to move this to action, or if y'all want to wait until, I'll put it on action at the next meeting. Okay, Pam, go ahead and put it on the action for approval at the next, at the July, 2nd July meeting.
What are we putting on for approval for the this budget plus the firefighter?
However, they make the motion.
So, we're waiting on a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Rogers, I'll make a motion that we, or, or do you want to just not make a motion? Just put it on the agenda for next time?
Whatever y'all, it's whatever the consensus of the board is. I'm sure it'd help Ms. Moore if we vote on the budget, but if we want to wait, we can. So, did you want to make a motion?
Well, I would, I would like to try to move forward with this position, um, finding the 37, or you, you're saying 34, but I thought it was 37. And so, we have it set up, ready to go. If, if we are so lucky as to find a instruct, an instructor in the next couple, three months that would be ready to go, I'd be, I'd like to be able to hit the ground running instead of waiting for us to have to meet and, and do everything. I think that we have a good amount of support from the county, um, to be able to do this once they reconvene in October and look at things, and if we are falling short a little bit of that 30, I think that they would, um, be supportive of giving us a little bit to start this, so, uh, what, what, what do you need from me to do this? Just a motion that we?
We just need a motion to move it to action.
Okay, I'm, I'm, make a motion that we move this to action so Lynette can do what she needs to do, and Mr. Rose could have the flexibility to be looking um, for.
Move the budget to action. Do I have a second?
I second.
Alright, thank you.
Pat Messick to move it to action.
Alright, Ms. Knight, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Ms. Tatter?
Aye.
Alright. Scratch what I said earlier, Pam, we're one action.
And Mr. Rogers?
The budget.
Mr. Rogers, I will say that if you include it and we don't use it, it will still be there, it's still our money, so it's not like you're going to be losing it, right?
Okay, thank you. Alright.
Thank you, Lynette.
Discussion of policy 7360, 8225, crowdfunding on behalf of the school system.
Mr. Johnson is on the call as well, and he made some, the recommended changes that we had talked about back in the spring about giving the flexibility for principals to review of, approve up to $5,000 in crowdfunding, superintendent's up to $25,000, and the board would ha, need to approve over $25,000, and we are fine with that, uh, but this is the pop, the, this is the draft that Mr. Johnson has done, and we just bring this up again for your review and, um, if you want to, for sitting up for 30 days.
Ms. Knight? Ms. Messick?
Um, I'm fine with what Dr. Rice said.
Ms. Tatter?
Uh, since we discussed this months ago, does it have to sit for 30 days? Or can we just go ahead and approve it, uh, the way Fred did it, drafted it?
Well, I think this is the first time we've actually seen, seen the appro, official document. So, Mr. Johnson, you tell me, do we need to set it for 30 days?
I think we do, I think you're, you're right. This is the first time that we've had the policy actually presented to the board with the amounts in it, so I do think it needs to sit for public comment.
Okay.
Alright, I have nothing to add, so moving on to speech center incorporated contract.
Yes.
Does that mean that we're going to let that sit then as is, and then?
Yeah, it sets, it sets as is for 30 days and it will come up for approval at the, uh, 1st July meeting.
August.
So, Pam, can you go ahead and add that to action? For that?
Thank you.
Speech center.
Yes, Ward, you should have in your packet, um, I actually have items C, D, E, and F, that's speech center, which is speech language services. We have Carolina occupational therapy contract. We have the communication services for the deaf and hard of hearing contract, that is for a sign language interpreter, and then F is a bayotta, is a nurse for one of our students in the county. Those are four contracts for EC services. They have all been approved by Mr. Johnson.
Ms. Moore?
I'm good with the recommendation.
Okay, Ms. Messick?
Um, yes, I'm fine with that recommendation.
Ms. Tatter?
As long as Mr. Johnson has approved everything, I'm good with it, thank you.
When does the current contracts expire for these four?
Uh, usually it, it ends, uh, June 30th and they start July 1st, but that's not necessarily always the case, um, there are different dates on different ones. If, um, we do some of the contracts, we write them up, and some of the... Different, um, we do some of the contracts, we write them up and some of the companies actually write them up.
But no one is missing services at this time, correct?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. With that being said?
Consent agenda for next time?
Well, Fred, with it being contracts involving the school system, can it go through consent? Or do we just put them on action?
I think they should be placed on the action agenda for the regular, uh, Ju, well, the, the Ju, the next July meeting.
Okay. Got that, Pam? All right, discussion of youth haven services.
Yes, Board members, you should have in your packet, and you would look, it looks like an MOU that's already been signed last year. But, um, if you look into the contract, it does say the term is the term of this agreement will be for one-year period starting, uh, July 1st, 2019, and will be renewed automatically unless otherwise noted. Um, I did talk with, uh, Mr. Johnson about this memorandum and, uh, there were no changes that we see, that we saw that needed to happen. We also were in contact with youth haven services and they had no changes at this time to the services. This is specifically for school-based therapy and, um, across the county and day treatment at, um, the locations are at King and Meadowbrook.
So this is an automatic renewal contract?
Yes.
Unless we had issues or they had issues.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Ms. Moore?
Ms. Collins, how many were in treatment, um, last year using of these services?
Um, I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Messick?
Um, I have no questions. Uh, I feel like that, um, these services have worked well in the past. And, um, so I hope that they will continue to work well for us.
Okay, Ms. Tatter?
It's a much-needed service for our school system and I support it completely. Thank you.
All right, then Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, since it's automatic renewal, we really don't have to do anything. This was as much for discussion, for information as anything, correct?
That's right. The only action we would need to take is if we wish to terminate the service.
Okay. So then I'm going to mark this as a closed issue. You don't have to put it on the agenda for the next one. Uh, discussion of budget amendments, Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir. We will start with the state public school fund. And you do have two amendments, uh, in your packet. And all that, both amendments are just allowing code transfers as the year goes along. We have to estimate the budget at the beginning of the school year. And then as things change, uh, we just have to, in this case, do code transfers. So both one and two amendment, one and two of state public school fund is only code transfers. Do you want me to allow questions in between or do you just want me to continue on?
I say head on with it.
Okay. The next one you see would be your current expense fund two. And in this case, we decreased our budget by $22,239.99. And the main reason for this decrease was in fines and forfeitures. And again, that was due basically to, uh, the court system not operating due to the COVID. And in this amendment, uh, it's noted that we actually gave, uh, school nutrition $10,358 for the school debt of meals. So that is included, uh, as far as the code transfer as well to cover that debt. And I know the board had approved for that much earlier, but we have now finalized that. And again, that was $10,358 that we ended up having to pay after donations and people actually made their payments. Your next amendment for current expense is number three. And again, this is just code transfers to allow it, how everything happened. We will go to federal amendment number eight. We actually received some, uh, risk pool money for our special needs program. This increased that budget 165.38. We received this after Mrs. Collins has to make an application for, uh, needs for our special student. So that's what that amendment's about. Current expense, uh, fund eight amendment number three. We're actually on the first amendment here decreasing it by $46,321.56. And you can see the detail there is some adjustments in more for our Medicaid and tuition and also where we've, uh, budgeted some fund balance that we have to for our special programs. Uh, another amendment, number four on fund eight. Again, when we done, I done the first one earlier and then as things change, as time goes. So we did receive some additional for, more for Medicaid money at the last minute. So now I'm increasing this one 4,006.20.49. And that shifted where we thought we were going to have to use some fund balance for special, uh, programs. We did not have to do as much, uh, since we received the additional revenue. Then again, on fund eight amendment number five, again, uh, last minute, we received $32,083.10, uh, for Medicaid, uh, from the state. So that increased the budget again. And then child nutrition, actually that's amendment number one, just decreasing the budget by 146.505.10. I will say that she received COVID money that could be used, uh, the CARES money. 283.155.90 was the amount that we were able to use federal dollars to support her program. So that was a plus with us receiving those additional dollars to be able to pay that much from the program. And it looks like she is going to be operating with a profit as a result of, of that. Be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Ms. Knight?
You mentioned operating at a positive. How does that work as far as still needing the 10,000? Is that like a different pot of money sort of?
Your, your 10,000 just came out of your regular current expense budget since child nutrition cannot have debt. So it just, it's just absorbed from any savings we had in another line item in current expense. And the money was transferred to the proper code to be able to do that.
Was the profit you just mentioned not in food and nutrition? I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Her profit, I, I did recommend and say that they were going to have a profit in, uh, school nutrition, which is a very good thing considering how they've had to operate here at, uh, since mid-March.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moore.
Ms. Messick?
Um, Ms. Moore, was some of that profit due to people, um, um, giving money?
The, the debt decreased, yes, ma'am, the debt decreased down to 10,000 as a result of some donations being received. That's correct.
Was the donation spread throughout the county? Or did it come from just one, you know, a certain area?
If the donations come in not restricted, they are spreaded throughout the county.
Okay.
But many schools received donations and donations were received from throughout the county. It wasn't just one church or one business that made one donation. We've received multiple donations throughout the year.
Oh, okay, throughout the year. Well, that's good.
And if, if a school had received a donation and they had debt, then that donation was applied to their debt before it was determined how much as a board you would have to pay.
Well, I think that's really good news that she came, um, in without debt and actually had some money considering, like you said, all the work that those folks did since March. And Dr. Rice, are they continuing through August?
They are continuing until August 1st. Uh, we do need some time to restock our kitchens, clean the kitchens and all of that, uh, to get ready for the school year. But we are continuing through the month of July.
Okay, what, eh, can you tell the exact kitchens that were used?
Were used or are going to be used going forward?
No, were, were used since March.
We've been using Chestnut Grove and Poplar Springs. We've been using Sandy Ridge and Piney Grove and been using Southeastern.
Okay, with that, okay, they've done a tremendous job.
And the fact of what they have done in us providing all those meals has helped them come out, uh, with, with the profit.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that, for all that information about the budget. I really appreciate it.
Ms. Tatter?
No comment. I'm good with everything. Thank you very much.
My only question is, Ms. Moore, do we need to move this to action for this meeting or the next?
If you do not oppose to that, for audit and purposes, uh, it would be good to move it to action because they're already asking for our information. But I understand if you're not willing to do that.
Okay, then that being said, the board, the chair will entertain a motion to move to action. It's so, it's so designated.
Uh, this is Pat Messick, um, vote to move this to action.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Rogers, Katie Tatter.
Thank you, Ms. Tatter. Ms. Knight, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Ms. Tatter?
Aye.
It's unanimous, it's action D, budget amendment. All right, capital outlay project update.
Yes, Board members, uh, in your packet, you should have, uh, a list of 2019, 2020 capital, uh, uh, budget updates. Uh, everything highlighted is completed. Um, if you look down, number one, that's just emergencies. We just did those as we needed them. Uh, number six, uh, as far as the gym floors, all those were completed with the exception of Piney Grove, uh, to my understanding. Uh, and look at the doors at King, that's work in progress now. The contractor's working on that, coming along real good. And, uh, so that won't be an issue having that done before school starts. Uh, uh, number 11, uh, the Johnson controls update, that was done and they've still got to do maintenance training. But we wanted to work on it several months before, uh, that way for guys had any questions, we could, we could do that in training. And that's just been put on hold due to the COVID. Um, on the second page, we, uh, number 17, we've got the lights, uh, in ceiling at Mount Olive. That's still the architect. We're hoping to, instead of doing any ceiling there, it just be able to replace the light fixtures. He's trying to work out the details of the lighting manufacturer, so that might save us some money there. Uh, number 21, the track at West Stokes, uh, they're work, currently working on that. It's scheduled to be completed August 17th. They're hoping around July, the 27th, they're going to be able to put asphalt down. Um, number 23, the canopy at Southeastern, that was scheduled to be done back in, uh, late spring, but the materials was put on hold when the COVID happened. The manufacturer just shut, shut the materials down. Uh, so that's on delay due to the COVID as well. Uh, when you look under item number 25, Piney Grove, uh, the student's desk that was approved, that was requested in the 2021 budget, their own order and scheduled to be delivered probably mid-July. Um, the West Stokes CTE building, it says here it's scheduled to be completed mid-July. We had a, a project meeting last week, last Thursday, and they did have some delays there with materials. They had some materials come in that were damaged and had a problem getting those materials damaged. So that date has been moved back to the end of July, but he does feel confident it will be done by the end of July. Are there any questions?
Ms. Knight?
No, sir, but thank you, Mr. Goins, for all you do, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Messick?
Um, well, it's like a lot of work has been done and that's really great. Um, the, uh, lights at Mount Olive, will they be able to be fixed before the students start back?
Yes, ma'am, that's our goal, to have that done before students return.
Okay, well, you folks have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Tatter?
Uh, I agree, it's been, there's been a lot of work done throughout the county this year and I appreciate the update and looks like everything's on track for when and if we do get back to school. Appreciate it, Ricky.
Thank you.
Yeah. Fine job again, Ricky.
Thank you.
Discussion of lottery application for Nancy Reynolds Elementary School.
Yes, this is something we've been doing for several years. The county has already requested, uh, that we do the application. It has to start with the Board of Education, once you all approve it. Then it goes to the county commissioners and then to the state. And that's where part of their funding module, they have used lottery funds. Uh, and, and this request, it's for Nancy Reynolds Elementary School and that's what basically it's been every year. So this is in your packet based on the request from the county commissioner so they can make a request to start drawing down lottery funds when it's available this school year.
Is there a timeframe for when they need the money or when they need the approval?
No, sir, it's not because in fact, they have drawn down all they can and they will not be able to do it till their, like, the next quarter. But at least, so if you put it, improve it later, they will, uh, time we get their application back to them and for their approval will be on target. So there is no, no, no rush.
Okay. Ms. Knight, do you have anything? Ms. Messick?
Uh, Ms. Moore says to pay down their debt services for the building.
Yes, this is part of their funding application that was started to, to, toward, uh, the debt of, of construction.
And do we know how many years more we have to pay on that school?
My understanding, this year will go through the 2930 budget year. And that information came from Julia Edwards, the county finance officer.
And what was that year?
2930.
That's when it'll be paid off?
Y- yes, ma'am.
When you say 2930, you're talking about 20 ni, uh, 20...
2029, 2030.
2029, 2030. If not, they've got the longest mortgage in history.
Okay, so say that, say that again.
2029 and 2030 year.
All right, thank you.
In other words, 10 more years, Pat.
I get it now.
Yes, you had me there for a second.
Well, I mean, I thought she said 2930.
Yeah. I was like, whoa.
And I thought, for goodness sakes, well...
It was nice school, it wasn't that nice.
About that was a year.
All right, well, little lefty there, thank you.
Ms. Tatter?
I'm, I'm good with everything. Thank you.
All right, Pam, if you would, go ahead and put that on action for the next one. What's that? COVID-19 update?
We were hoping to have better news this week. Uh, we were hoping to get information from the governor about what phase we would be starting in when we get back. Uh, but as you know, that has been delayed and we don't have a date for when he is supposed to make that decision. Which again, makes that very difficult for us. It makes it difficult for families. Uh, the biggest thing that, you know, the two parts of this is we have the responsibility of educating kids. And so we want to make sure that we have a quality education for students. We also don't discount the fact that parents with little kids, uh, especially have daycare issues when we are not in school. And so we have put out messages to our fam, families to prepare for the three phases that we're going to be dealing with. We're working with principals right now to find out, you know, what, again, phase two seems to be the, the biggest question. Phase one, pretty much everybody's back. Phase C, no one is back. Phase B and how to implement that is what's taking school districts across the state a lot of time this summer to figure out. We're working with other school districts to see what they're doing, what they're doing in a regional idea. But we're all in different situations. Uh, some schools, you know, their bus routes are 30-minute routes in city school districts where we have, you know, three-hour routes for... where we have, you know, three-hour routes for some of our longest routes, which makes double runs in a day pretty much impossible. Um, so we're still working with that. We, we do have some information to talk to you today a little bit about driver's ed. We have, they passed a bill that said driver's ed could resume. Um, we are, Dr. Taylor's been working with our driver's ed staff on that and, but we're still held under virtual classes right now. But we are looking to start some of the online classroom portions of driver's ed in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we want your blessing with it. It's not really a vote, but we want your blessings with that before we proceed and announce that. Uh, but what we're looking at is the week of, well, and I'm, my calendar ends and I had it downstairs on my desk, the week of June twentieth, is that correct, Dr. Taylor?
Uh, actually, Dr. Rice, the, the four weeks that we've got scheduled would be the weeks of July the twentieth, July the twenty-seventh, and the first two weeks of August. I think it's the third and the tenth. They would be five-day sessions. They'll be capped at twenty-five students per class. That's all the state will allow us to teach virtually. So right now, if, if the board's okay with uh with our plan, we will advertise that over the next couple of days, we would have a virtual registration on Thursday. The first twenty-five would then come and get their packets on Friday. And Mr. Powell uh will be teaching the, the virtual classes for us. But it's four weeks, the last two weeks of July and the first two weeks of August is when we tentatively have them scheduled.
And we are also working on a, we've got, and Ricky, you might want to speak to this a little bit. We've got a germ buster, germ fogger, if you will, that will fumigate, kill germs in a vehicle. And we're working on a plan that they would wear masks in the vehicles, driver would wear gloves when they're using the steering wheel and controls on the car, and a cleaning mechanism that as soon as we're allowed to start the driving portion, we have our other driver's ed teachers that would do the behind-the-wheel with that. Um, with practice, you know, it's hard to practice social distancing in a car with three people. But we would to the greatest extent possible, but let them drive for five or six hours, come out for a lunch break, fumigate the car again, let it sit to dry, to be ready for that next group. They would drive five or so hours, six hours in the evening, and then we would clean the car again overnight before it's ready for the next day. So we are putting a plan in place to be able to start that as soon as we're allowed and get clearance for that. But we have the, the clearance to go ahead and start with the, the classroom portion. And we want to get that started uh as soon as possible so that when we, everything is opened back up, we're not facing a backlog. And, and I know that students and families who have turned fourteen and a half are getting anxious. You know, every day that the clock ticks, they're getting closer to that fifteenth birthday, and they're getting anxious. And to be honest, other than graduations, we probably received more calls about driver's ed than anything else. So we kind of wanted to share that plan with you today and make sure that you're okay with that. Uh, just what we're looking at educationally right now is to deliver instruction daily. And if students have signed up for a hundred percent online option this year, they would be assigned, what, what we're tentatively looking at right now is assigning them to a class as normal. And a teacher would have a Chromebook, and when they're doing direct instruction, that would be broadcast at that time and video, uh recorded at that time. And so that if people that are wanting to do this at home could be on the normal schedule, that at eight-thirty, if I went to math class at eight-thirty, I would join that Google Meet and watch that direct instruction just like everyone else. I would have my work in my folders, but able to be able to do that online. Uh, the same thing with A-Day, B-Day, the students that are not in school, again, could log in at that time to receive that direct instruction, receive that feedback, um and move on. And then in section C, everyone would have that opportunity to do that. So the teachers would be teaching every day as normal. It's just, is it ninety percent of their class in their room? Fifty percent of the class in the room? Or zero percent of the class in the room? But that direct instruction would be going out every day. That was one of the things we learned from our, our survey results and the feedback from parents, is the ones that lost that video component uh felt like they lost connection with the teachers. And so we want to make sure that we're providing that daily. Again, if someone does not have internet access, but parents are going to work or kids are going to daycare and don't have it during the day, if a parent went by one of the hotspots areas that we've publicized or one of our school parking lots, in just a few minutes, they could download those direct instruction lessons onto a flash drive or something, take it home, and be able to, the kids would be able to access it that way as well. So we are still working out all of the details with that. Uh, again, with EC, there's, there's going to be some special things related to the IAP that would go into that. So, but that's kind of where we are right now. Again, we were hoping to have an idea of what the governor was thinking, uh where we would start, but he has delayed that at this time. Um, again, we are continuing the feeding program through the end of July. Our numbers have slipped, but we also know it's vacation weeks and things like that. It was less than ten thousand this week that we distributed. We are going to our modified week this week of Monday, Wednesday, Friday feedings. We have cut our kitchens down to three. Uh, Ms. Dillon or Dr. Taylor, help me out. Which, which ones did we settle on? Was it Popper Springs, London, and Pine Grove?
Yes, sir, that.
Yes.
Those are the three, if I'm not mistaken, that we're going to be using moving forward. Those were the three largest sites that provided the most meals, so we determined to use those at this point.
And we are looking to distribute meals on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And on Mondays, you'd pick up food for Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday, you would get it for Wednesday, Thursday. Friday, you would get it for Friday and the weekend. So still trying to serve the needs to our communities, but because of the lack of uh meals that we've been distributing, we've seen a decline in that. Uh, we needed to cut some days in kitchens uh for that as well. Are there any questions about any of those issues? And, and the team can certainly chime in to help answer any as you have them.
Ms. Knight?
So the biggest determining factor right now is what the governor decides. Basically, you're prepared for multiple scenarios, it sounds like.
Yes, and that is the frustrating thing. There are the three phases that he has said. And what he is going to allow us to start school on, I don't, I don't anticipate that that will be the only phase for the entire school year. Um, it may start off in phase C and gradually work its way down to A and then back to normal. But I have a feeling this may depend on COVID numbers at, at any given time. We've also not been given any idea of, you know, we will be in a phase for the minimum of two weeks and then before we would change them. So we don't know if he is looking, I mean, I know right now he has, he has said at the last time when he was going to make a decision on a phase, he said it would be three weeks before he made the new decision. Hopefully, we at least have that type of continuity with our school as well, that we have three to four weeks before we would have to change phases, but really that is up to him. Uh, school boards do have the option to take a more restrictive approach if we wanted to. So if he said you can go A, we could say B or C. But I would suggest that that would be more for the urban area schools that maybe have, are in hotspot areas. Not, I don't think that many rural schools will take advantage of that. Uh, unless it was determined that B was just too big of a hardship to try to go an A-Day, B-Day. Uh, some schools were looking at two days, students would come Monday, Tuesday. Another group of students would come Wednesday, Thursday, and no one would come on Friday. Uh, our lower grades have said that would be very, they thought would be very detrimental with kindergartners. You know, you're seeing them Monday and Tuesday and not seeing them again for a week. So they like the idea of every other day so that you could see them more often uh and have more continuity of that instruction. So that, that is the main determining factor is what he puts us in. And I wouldn't, I would not at this time with our numbers recommend going to a more severe level than he is. Uh, some districts may, but that's not, would be, that would not be my recommendation.
I know it's all population, but at this time, it's not going to be based, probably county by county based on our numbers, not like a statewide issue.
That's the other difficult part of this is, yes, we're being told it will be a statewide decision. Uh, we have, as superintendents, well, I'm not going to say all, because some want that, some want the statewide decision. Others look at it like if it's snowing in Watauga County, why should Charlotte Mecklenburg be out of school? If Charlotte is in a hotspot with a lot of cases, why should that affect uh Stokes County and Allegheny, Ash, or Avery? Uh, if we're, don't have many cases or one or two cases. And I think the last time I've seen a number, Stokes County still has about sixteen active cases out of our roughly forty-five thousand residents. So, but you know, other places are dealing with different things. But yes, as of right now, it looks like it would be a statewide decision.
In some ways, that renders our polling that we did not as applicable. You know what I mean? If parents locally are okay with um or wanting students to get uh in-class instruction, but then, you know, we're kind of helpless in that sense.
Well, what that polling does help us with is that there was roughly twenty percent of our people that said that they would, didn't feel comfortable at that time sending their kids back and would like an online option. That let us know that we did not need to start a virtual school. That let us know that there wasn't pockets of kids enough that would pull a teacher out of a school, but we can still offer a virtual option. If someone wants a full online school, we're going to assign them to a, our plan right now is to assign them to a teacher. But again, every teacher, our, our goal this year is to have a camera facing them for direct instruction. They would be assigned to a class as normal. Because we also think that after, you know, at some point, people are going to want to come back. And if they, you know, if they don't, we have them covered. But if they do, um, we have a seat for them. And so we've got to be prepared for that. So if parents want a full online option this year, we're going to be able to offer that for them. Um, without having to create a school, dedicate something to that, we believe we can pull that off with our, with our current technology and staffing and, and make that realistic. We're trying to meet the needs of parents as well in, in what we're doing without having to. Some school districts have created, hired a principal, created a staff that all they did was virtual. Our numbers didn't really support that to pull a teacher from a building. I mean, ours were, were scattered out, um, very well through, I mean, a few kids at each school, so it didn't support pulling a teacher from any one school. But we still can believe we can serve them and meet their needs.
However, will we consider the same polling to staff or their concerns with staffing, uh high-risk staff members, that sort of thing? Uh, has there been a filler put out for that or what's your plan there?
There has not been one sent out to staff because we are still waiting on some guidance with that with, with HR issues with this. Normally, if someone has medical concerns, they need to take long-term disability. Uh, they need to look at those routes so that they're our HR department. We've not been given clear guidance as to how COVID nineteen would work into that. Would that become an eligibility for a long-term disability? They've, they've talked about some of the, the leave types that people could use. But we, we've waited on further guidance to, to poll our staff to see. Right now, we're anticipating staff being there, teaching online, and if, uh, but we have not polled them yet, waiting on further guidance.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Messick?
I just had um a question. Will Doc, uh, will Governor Cooper address the fact that some systems, and I think I'd reached out to you and you gave me a great answer on that, but with the graduations?
Well, right now.
Go ahead.
Well, right now, graduations, we are still waiting on the next phase. Uh, we're supposed to get that in about two weeks, I believe, on Friday. And usually he makes those announcements a few days before that. That will give us a great understanding of what we could, we're able to do. If we're still under the same limitations of groups of twenty-five outside and things, we will probably look at that time to reevaluate where we are, uh, ask our students, poll them again, see what they would like, see what, so we'll check at that point. But yes, his orders, if he opens it up and says that it's up to local health officials in local counties, we will certainly reach out immediately to our health department, EMS, and find out what they're comfortable with us doing as well. But as of right now, with the state restrictions of outside groups of twenty-five or more, uh, we would not be able to, we couldn't pull it off today or this week due to those restrictions. And until he gives us the new phase, uh, we won't know. But we will, we will certainly communicate that to our families and, and poll our students if needed as soon as possible after the next phase is released.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think that in the past, we had just projected some of those dates hoping that we would be able to uh be approved to have those graduations intact.
That is correct, and we're still holding those dates. You know, originally, we thought that the first phase was going to be two weeks, the second phase. You know, we were given a little timeline then of when it would release us from that, but then he didn't. Uh, and he threw the three-week more weight on that. Uh, we would kind of project it out with what he was saying, hoping that by August, we would be pretty well released to hold a graduation. Now, that, that's in limbo based on his orders. Again, hopefully with the statewide order to wear masks, if that reduces the numbers, he'll feel comfortable. Maybe letting us have graduation with people in the crowd wearing the mask. And we will certainly do that as soon as possible, you know, that August first date uh for those families. If not, we will, again, look to see what, what our families want us to do at that point. Uh, whether what they've already done, whether that's enough at that point, whether they want to look to try to do something later in the year, uh, we will certainly try to be responsive to our families.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Tetter?
Uh, the previous pollings, I don't know how much we can rely on those since things have such, so drastically changed with the increasing numbers uh across North Carolina. So new polling will definitely be needed sooner, as soon as we can get some more feedback from the governor. But what I heard you say, Dr. Rice, is that we wouldn't go any more relaxed than what the governor recommends.
Right now, we're allowed to. If the governor said we're starting off the school year in B, we could not make the decision locally to start in A. Um, I guess we could, but we would be at the risk of losing state funding. And so, uh, but right now, the order says we could be more restrictive, but we could not be less restrictive.
Right, okay, so hopefully by our next meeting, we will have some more statewide guidelines. However, if we do not, can we have a better look as the school board of what our B option will be?
Yes, ma'am. We plan to sit down this week and next and hammer out a lot of those details as to what we think B will be. Uh, we've had a lot of people on vacation the last two weeks, and so we're looking to re- resume, resume those meetings this week and knock out some of those details.
Uh, we've heard on the news that some school districts are getting PPE. Has Stokes County received anything from the state or federal government?
We were supposed to receive those at the bus. We were supposed to receive those at the bus garage last week. Brad, did those come in? Are you aware? EMS told us that they should have been delivered last week, late last week. I've not heard, but I'll check into that. But they were scheduled to be delivered, I believe, last Thursday.
Dr. Rice, I can speak to that. They were delivered to the bus garage and they have been moved from the bus garage to the lower level or the basement of the central office. So, we received PPE primarily for our nurses and those types of folks from the governor's office from the state level. But those have been, if I'm not mistaken, they have been delivered and are now housed at the central office.
And what did those include, Dr. Taylor?
From what I understand, they are, there are some mask gloves, there are some gowns included, and maybe some face shields for those high-risk type positions. Either our nurses or possibly even can be used for some of our screeners, those staff members involved in, in the screening process. But we will, we've not gone through those. We've just kind of checked them in. We got them late last week, but when we go through those, we'll give you a full rundown of what's in the box. But from what I, what I know, that's a brief listing of what will be available in each packet.
I believe we should receive about 60 temporal scan thermometers as well out of that group. But everything else you said is accurate, and I believe the only thing I remember that was added to that list was some thermometers.
And when you say screeners, Dr. Taylor, are you meaning, tell us what you mean by screeners? Are you talking about the kindergarten screenings and-
No, no, ma'am, no, ma'am. No, I'm sorry. What I meant when I used the term screenings or screeners is we are right now being led to believe unless anything changes. We are preparing for a process of screening all of our students as they enter the building whenever they get to come back. We're working through that. So, for example, we will have to identify staff members that will have to use the temperature scanners as students come in. So, we will, we, as Dr. Rice mentioned earlier, we're in the process of finalizing those details of who those staff members would be. So, that, that's when I, when I used the word screeners, that's the type of screening I was referring to. I apologize if I confused anybody.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Tell us what the plans are, or I guess, are those people going to be identified as, for lack of a better word, first responders at schools when nurses are not assigned to the school? Since every school does not have a full-time nurse, what is the plan for-
Well, right now, Ms. Dutter, we are, we have received some, some basic guidance as to, or in regard to the screening process. And right now, we're not being led to believe that, that those screeners will actually have to be nurses. It may be an all-hands-on-deck type approach. I will say this, we are, we as staff members, and I'll use that very broad term, we are going to be asked to do things that we typically don't do, of course, in a normal year, under normal circumstances. So, it may be first responders, but it may also be other staff members that we identify and train on the screening process. We've not finalized those details as of yet. But you're right, we only have five nurses and those, those young ladies cannot be everywhere all the time. So, we are going through and, and working through the process of who would be available, how could their schedules be impacted, would they have to be there earlier in the day, if they are one of the, you know, the folks doing the screenings? So, those are some of the details that Dr. Rice was referring to that we are, we are, basically, we've got them in draft form. We're just waiting to make sure what does the governor, how does he start us, and does he add any other requirements to that so we can then finalize that and identify those people at that time?
We aren't only going to be required to screen students, aren't we, aren't we going to be required to screen any visitors as well? How's that going to look?
Right now, we are being led to believe that visitors will have to be screened as well. We are being led to believe right now that anyone who enters our buildings will have to go through a screening process. So, we are also talking about first-level screenings versus second-level screenings. So, for example, if we do mass screenings at the beginning of each school day where we're screening students and staff members as they come in, et cetera, that would be first-level screening. That would be done by a team of people, a group, large group of people. Whereas if a UPS gentleman or mailman, mail carrier, et cetera, if they were to come in later, that, those screenings may be done by office staff because teachers would then be in their classrooms or, you know, working in other capacities. So, we, we've got different types of screenings throughout the day. But yes, ma'am, we are being led to believe right now that any visitor will have to be screened regardless of what time they, they get to our building.
Can you tell me or tell us what kind of precaution or safety protocols are going to be there in place for office staff who do see the, these visitors?
The first thing we're doing is, Dr. Rice, we have talked with Dr. Rice and Mr. Goins and myself, we have met with a company out of Thomasville who actually make various products. And one product that we've bought from them is, it's a guard, it's a shield, it's a two-by-two piece of plexiglass on a frame that we have bought enough to go at each front office area of each of our schools. And we've also bought extra to go in some of our offices who have a lot of traffic, if you will, that will basically separate them from, from visitors as they come in. So, that's one thing that we will do. Another thing that we're doing is we're currently working with our nurses to make sure that we have all protocols in place from, from their perspective. We've also ordered a large number of hand sanitizing stations. It's basically a metal pole that has a metal box on top that a hand, a gallon of hand sanitizer will set in, and those will be placed strategically throughout our buildings. We have to identify points of entry in our buildings, and they will all have hand sanitizing stations. Each front office will have a hand sanitizing station. So, we are going through the guidance that we've been given so far, and we are responding to that guidance and creating draft plans that Dr. Rice has referenced earlier in this meeting, that we will be able to give you finalized versions of that as soon as we make sure that we have all of the guidance from the state. Dr. Rice, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir, you covered it very well.
Dr. Taylor, you're, you're basically talking about the guidance that was issued from the Department of Health and Human Services.
That is correct. That's the main document that we're using. But also nurses, our nurses are taking part in some regional webinars as well, and they're picking up not a lot of additional information, but they are getting some more specific information to their field or their area, and they are sharing that with us as well. We're going to be meeting with them over the next week or so, just to make sure that we can take all of that information from multiple locations and make sure that we have all of that together. But our nurses are now beginning to get more information from their regional lead, their consultant, that they're passing along to us as well.
Right. And what I've seen, it is going to be very extensive. And I think you're right, it applies to anyone that is entering a school building or boarding school transportation.
That is correct. We've been given information, and as Dr. Rice mentioned earlier, we have ordered, we're affectionately calling them our fogging machines, but they are, they're basically disinfectant machines where you put a product in and it mists, it's a fine mist. And we've got those for our schools, for buildings and outdoor facilities. And we've also got some units that we can use on our buses and in our vehicles as well. So, we are, we are taking all of the guidance that we've been given, and we're creating multiple plans. We're talking with our principals about how do we address when students get on campus, if they leave and go to internships? You know, for example, if I come in for an eight o'clock class and then I leave and go for second period for an intern, when I come back, I'll have to be screened when I come back. I can't come back on campus because I've left. And so, yeah, we've, there's a lot of layers to this, but we're working through it. And Dr. Rice, we talk daily, if not nightly, and over the weekends about this as well. But we're working to get all these things in place.
You're correct. It's quite extensive.
Ms. Dutter, you have any questions?
Well, I can't, I can hardly imagine what, what this is going to look like, having worked in the office without a nurse half of a week and, you know, essentially taking on the role of nurse's duties as far as temperature checks, meds, things like that. What our, our front office personnel are going to have to do? And I just want to know what, if they don't feel comfortable with this, what are the options there? Because I have, my stepdaughter is a physician's assistant, and she's not even required by her doctor that she works for, if someone is symptomatic, she's not even required, she's not required to do any of the testing there. They have someone else that does the testing on staff. So, she can focus on the, on the less critical patients that come into her office, and their office doesn't even accept sick patients. You know, you have to go through that screening there.
Yes, ma'am. Well, unfortunately, I don't know that we will have the option. There is some legislation right now being discussed in Raleigh about wanting a nurse in each school across the state, but I, I do not know if that will get out of, I don't know if that will pass, I guess is the best way of saying that. And if it did, that would only be for, from what I'm seeing, a one-year option. So, I don't know that there are enough nurses out there, and I don't know where the state would find the money to do that if that happened. Short of that, we can't necessarily deny access. Now, there is some guidance in the document that Mr. Johnson just referenced, that if, you know, what happens if a young person doesn't pass screening? So, for example, if I'm driving a bus and a young person comes to the, to the door and I screen them and they don't pass the screening, we just turn around and send them back home? What if it's a first grader? What if it's mom and dad's already left and going to work? Those are things that we're trying to work through. Now, I will tell you that there is guidance, there's in that document that Dr. Rice has referenced earlier, it says in there that we are to identify someone that will man our sick room. We're not going to have nursing staff to do that. So, we are going to have to require some staff to do some things that, and we will provide the appropriate training and PPE to do that. But to your original question, if they deny or if they say, "I can't do that," then as Dr. Rice has said, there's an HR component to this that we continue to work through with Ms. Jessup and the folks at the state level and our attorney, Mr. Johnson, to find out how, how does that, can a staff member, what happens when they say they can't do that or I won't do that? So, I, unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that question. I'll just be honest with you. But we are working with a lot of people that are helping us develop that answer or find that answer.
As far as, Fred, you might be the one to address this question. July 1st, we got the email from School Board Association regarding the school must begin on August 27th and no remote instruct, remote instruction days before August 24th. Can you address that concern that they sent to us?
Well, that, that is a concern, and right now, that is in the legislation. However, there's a possibility that the governor may enter an emergency order that would allow us to provide virtual instruction, or there's also a possibility of emergency legislation. So, there is no definitive answer to that right now, other than the current law says we can't do it until a certain date. So, we're all facing that problem, except those schools that do have the virtual academies.
Dr. Rice, does Yacken County have that virtual academy we discussed a couple of years ago? Were they still using that this last school year?
Mr. Rose, would you like to address that? You, you did some of that research on that.
I believe they are when I look at their website.
That's, that's when I, that's where I saw it and asked Dr. Rice, you know, if you could look into that then. So, you don't, you don't know if we still, or if they still use that or how that goes or, did you ever reach out to Dr. Martin about that?
I looked into theirs and I looked into Surrey's, you know, with their virtual academies to see how those were offered and, you know, to see how their, their teachers implemented that program.
Our problem comes from staffing. Again, if, if we had, you know, the way our schools are set up, if two kids from Pine Hall want to be in it, two kids from Loston will want to be in it, and let's even put it in the same grade level, in third grade, and, you know, five from Mount Olive, we have a problem because the state funds us with staffing with whole, our big numbers, not each individual school. And so, we would have to pull staff from a school to run the virtual part of it. And that's where we run into the problem is because we have a lot of small schools, that's why we have the, all of our combo classes and all of that. This would create a staffing issue to pull a virtual staff together to run an online school. That would take them out of the classrooms, but not enough kids come out of any individual classroom to make that really workable. And so, that's why we have looked at this year, especially with A-Day, B-Days and all of that, we're talking about putting a camera in every classroom and assigning possibly some virtual kids to a teacher from a school. That way, for one, if they don't like it and they want to come back, we have a seat for them. We've not, we're not, you know, if, so that, we just don't have that staffing pool where we can say, okay, well, we're going to take, you know, again, how many chemistry teachers out of West Stokes? How many social studies teachers out of South Stokes? How many math teachers out of these different places to make up for the, the need there? It just becomes a staffing issue with our current structure because of our small schools. So, we think we have come up with another option where we can meet that need without having a full virtual academy, but giving parents a virtual option.
Anything else, Ms. Dutter?
Not at this time.
All right. Moving on to discussion of iReady contract.
All right. Board members, I just want to let you know a little bit about the, the number here. First of all, I got to give some credit to Ms. McGee. We received our first quote from iReady. We went through and looked real carefully, and we found some implementation service charges. When we went back to the company with that, that reduced our cost significantly. Then, in our chief academic officer meetings with PTEC, we started talking about different promotionals that were run within the company and found out some specials on the toolkit. And when we went back to the company, they reduced the price more. From the initial quote with the toolkit, we've reduced that approximately $43,000. As far as the toolkit goes, when I mentioned to the principals that we were in negotiation to get the toolkit for them along with iReady, they were extremely pleased with that decision. I wish that we could have gotten the numbers from testing for this year, but unfortunately, COVID prevented us from doing that. What we did receive was the beginning of year- What we did receive was the beginning of year and middle of year diagnostic test. And the growth was significant, and I was extremely pleased with the middle school growth that we saw. It seems like the program truly addressed the issues that we have been seeing. Um, so again, I'd like to present the contract to you to also include the toolkit for all of our schools. I'll entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Ms. Knight?
Um, Mr. Rose, do we feel that definitely iReady is, um, here to stay, or is there any question there?
I would love for us to keep this, especially considering the focus that we're having on our remote learning plans. iReady is a great tool for us to use. And as you remember, when we first switched over to remote learning, we had lessons, uh, straight out of iReady to cover those first two weeks that we made that transition. And then our students continued to work in the program, um, through the year. It just provides us so much data that we really need to drive our instruction.
What is your overall staff feedback?
Um, I can let Ms. McGee address some of the elementary. The principals, uh, with the, with the middle school, and speaking with them, you know, initially, it was tough to get buy-in. Seems like the buy-in increased drastically after we went through that mid-year diagnostic, and everybody was able to see the growth that we were showing. Um, also, for some of our students, it's really challenging, and I'll speak from the viewpoint of my own son. Um, he, he was challenged by iReady and didn't really, you know, care for that. He might be working a grade level above, and it was really challenging for him, you know, to work at that level. But as a parent, I did appreciate the fact that he was being challenged. Ms. McGee, would you like to add anything for, for elementary?
Um, just like, uh, any program, the beginning of the school year, there were growing pains. Um, but after they, this, every, the staff and everyone got their middle-of-the-year data and started really understanding what it was they were looking at, um, it's hard when you're changing programs. Um, for teachers who had never had a program, the, the transition was a lot easier. Um, it's been very telling. Um, I've had some really good conversations with administrators and with some teachers. Um, one administrator, um, made the comment to me that this has really opened their eyes to the fact that we were teaching, um, in the lower grades, we were focused so much on comprehension before we had really had taught foundational skills that the students needed. Um, because with the opposite, with M-class, you know, the TRC is the focus, which is the text reading comprehension. So, um, with it, like I said, though, with any other pro- with any program, there has, we've had this transition year. Um, so we've take, we've taken some feedback that I've gotten from teachers and from administrators, and even from some students and things that I've heard, um, from them, and, um, asked for certain things for, in, within our professional development that we are going to ask from iReady this year. Um, we're going to be doing all of our stuff virtual this year, obviously, with all the things that are going on, but, um, there's some really good snippets of things that we're going to, um, pull in.
And I will say that iReady has been extremely responsive. Um, Ms. McGee and I collect information from, from the teachers and principals, and then we will have meetings with personnel from iReady. And they've made changes in their program based on feedback that we've given them directly. Initially, they had given us something called standards mastery, and it can only be assigned by administrators. We shared with them that we wanted the teachers to have full access to this to assign, you know, the standards assessments as they went through, and they have added that for us this year. They completely revised their program so that it will do that for us. So I appreciate the fact that it is such a responsive company, um, when we give them feedback.
The only other thing I will add is that iReady is very responsive. Like Mr. Rose was saying, they are coming out with oral reading fluency this fall, um, which will, we have another piece that teachers will be able to hear their students reading fluently. Um, they were also coming out with a dys- dyslexia screener. So they are, um, they are, have already sent out a packet of all the things that are coming out, um, to help us support our students and continue to meet their needs.
I think that's wonderful, especially the dyslexia screening, um, as well as the oral reading fluency. Um, one more question, um, would, you know, initially starting out, keep an M-class in place to kind of compare as far as that's what students and teachers were looking, used to, you know, just being a total different tool? Would that have been helpful to keep M-class in place as well, or just too costly?
It would have been too costly, especially with the, um, you know, the situation, situation we were in last year, where I station, what was dictated by the state that we do that. Um, so I have to give a lot of credit to our elementary K-three teachers in learning two new programs last year. Um, you know, iReady gave us a K-eight component that we've never had before so that, you know, it's going to make for a smoother transition from fifth to sixth grade. Probably the M-class data, I always, you know, appreciated looking at that, um, at the elementary level, uh, when I was a principal. But the iReady data is extremely powerful as well. With them adding some of the components that they have, um, I, I think it's going to meet all the things that, that M-class did for us before.
All right. Thank you all so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Ms. Messick, do you have anything?
Um, no, I'd just like to say that, um, I'm glad that it gives, you know, assessments and then personalized instruction. So each student has their own personalized instruction. Is that correct, Ms. McGee?
Yes, ma'am. Each student follows their own learning path, um, as well as if a teacher is seeing a deficiency, because again, this is not to supplant the teacher, but if a teacher sees a deficiency, he can also, or he can assign lessons as well.
So it's, it's kind of like level learning. You just move up each level as you make it proficient for yourself. Is that correct?
Yes, it's very personalized. Well, as now that we're getting the toolkit, we're going to have for every, uh, for all of our, um, teachers to utilize, it'll be very standards-based as well, so they can provide that standards-based instruction in the whole group as well, or differentiated as needed as well.
And this oral reading fluency, that's really great to add to that. So I'm really, I'm really pleased with... Did iReady come from the state?
It did not. Uh, it's a company, Curriculum and Associates, that puts that product out. Um, however, with what we have seen thus far, it is on the state-approved list.
Oh, that, that's what I meant. It is on the state-approved list, and that's really great. I feel like that it gives, um, more feedback for teachers, uh, to see the growth of their students. And it also gives the students self-esteem when they see themselves growing because that, um, helps them to see, you know, hey, I've, um, made this, I've made this effort, and I've become proficient, and now I can move on. And I think this helps build self-esteem when you, um, can progress like this and see your progression. So thank you for, um, making this available to students and, and teachers.
Thank you all for approving it.
Ms. Tetter?
It sounds like there was a, a positive ending to the iReady when it had a rocky start this year. Uh, and that's because of learning, teachers having to learn these new platforms. But we had also asked for some feedback from teachers in a, in a means of a survey, and with the different ending of our school year, um, wondering, did y'all ask for some official feedback in the way of a survey? Or we just didn't do that this year then?
I had not done a survey specific to iReady.
Lord, I don't know if you recall, we did ask for that, but didn't, didn't push it since we, um, everything changed.
And Ms. Tetter said that, uh, and, um, our teachers were so overwhelmed at the end of this school year, um,
Right.
this, this spring, um, it was very, for them, and they were getting survey inundated and, and vendor in, in inundated. Vendors were just sending them stuff constantly, trying to get them to try this free, this free, and that free. Um, but
Oh, yeah. We get, we get that too as school board member.
So, um, um, but we can definitely make that a priority this school year to, um, um, put that on our plan. Um, and I want to make a note right, on, on my notes right now, um, to get that out, uh, middle of the year. That way, it doesn't get away from us.
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Is there everything you have, Ms. Tetter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then Ms. Mollajoff wants one of the board members to move it to action. Please put it on action for the July meeting for the project. Kate Baker?
Do you need a motion for that?
No, I'm just going to put it on the action for the next meeting in July. Unless somebody, unless y'all have a burning mind on it today. Okay, moving on. Aruba AP bundle kits.
Good morning. Um, I applied. Aruba was running a free offer for free outside access points. Um, so I applied, really unsure of what, um, that involved and what I would get. Um, we were able to get that, so we got four, um, two bundle kits, which included four access points, so we can expand our current access points that we're putting in at no cost to Stokes County Schools, which was worth $13,868. I just wanted to let you all know that's what we were getting and adding to our current infrastructure.
Ms. Knight?
Thank you so much, Ms. Baker. I think this is great. I appreciate it.
Ms. Messick?
Um, yes, I also think this is, um, great, and we appreciate you applying for it. How many, uh, sites did you say? I missed that.
Well, we're, we're putting them at all the sites already, but this will allow us to expand some of our current sites, some of our larger sites. Um, we can expand on what we already have. Um, but we added the six sites in the beginning in March, um, which was Pine Hall, Sandy Ridge, Nancy Reynolds, Piney Grove, West Oaks, and South Oaks. Um, South Data's already gotten Southeastern Inn and Walnut Cove, and we're, we're adding to the remaining schools. But these two kits will allow us to expand, um, some of the current ones we have.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you for applying for it.
Ms. Tetter?
Uh, Ms. Barker, can you, do you have any more information about that email you sent us regarding, what was it, space? That, that new potential option for high-speed internet? Um, when you shared that, you said you'd already put in the, the area code for Danbury for doing that?
Yes, ma'am. I don't have a lot of information, just the email that I received from you all. So I shared, um, I shared with all the principals and staff. Um, and all I know now, um, that it's potentially, the, according to the email, will be available ready for the fall, um, at a, a better, better rate than some of the current ones that are offering in, in, in the harder-to-reach areas. So I don't, I honestly don't have a whole lot of information other than what I've shared with you all.
Can, can you just brief us in layman's terms that, what, what that could potentially do for our underserved areas?
Well, according to what, um, what has been shared, and again, I don't, I don't have a whole lot of information other than the email, um, it would be able to add, um, service to the remote areas where our current providers cannot or will not go to those particular spots. So it would, um, allow that area to be served by satellite.
So it's a hope, it's a hopeful satellite internet connection option
Yes, ma'am.
for our more remote areas in the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, how else are they promoting this besides sending it to the school board? Do you have any idea?
No, ma'am. I do not.
Any cost projection on this, anything like that?
Again, just the email I received is all I have, and I forwarded that to you all.
Right, because I signed up for it just to get information and haven't seen anything other than the, um, initial thanks for signing up. We'll get back with you, whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't know if you had any more success at, at your level with doing that because that would be wonderful, and if that, if, if that's something that does pan out, um, could we as a school board just promote, I mean, a school system promote that on our website? That, that's an option for parents to look into?
Yes, ma'am. Once, once given the green light to do that, yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm sure if we could, because that would be a private industry. Fred, you could weigh in on that, but we're not allowed to promote for a for-profit business. Is that correct, Fred?
That, that, that might be an incorrect word, just, just
I mean, I've shared it with the principals. Right, and that's why I didn't put it on the website. I shared it with the principals so that they could, you know, forward the emails and share with the teachers and staff so that they would have that option and, and put in their, um, zip code hopefully to, um, get the emails. And like you, I've only gotten the "Thanks for your submission", so, um, we're just a hurry-up-and-wait kind of thing right now.
Send me the email. Let me take a look at it. But yeah, we, we cannot advertise or promote a private venture, but, um, send it to me. Let me take a look at it, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thanks much. Moving on to action real quick. Approval of the student handbook. The board?
I have, um, included the fee list with the processing fee for school cash online. Uh, that was included for all except for driver's ed because driver's ed is capped at $65. Um, I'll entertain any questions you may have on this. I know I'd put this forward, um, at our previous meeting.
Okay. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
This is Pat Messick. I make a motion to approve the school fees.
Do I have a second?
Should it also state handbook? Are we approving the student handbook in addition to the fees? Okay.
And handbook, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Sure.
Okay. Ms. Knight, how do you vote? Ms. Messick?
No.
Ms. Tetter?
Hi.
All right, it's unanimous. Approval of the Johnny Sexton and Associates Incorporated contract. I have a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the Johnny Sexton Associates contract.
Do I have a second?
That's it. I forgot minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. Ms. Knight, how do you vote? Ms. Messick?
Uh.
Ms. Tetter?
Hi.
unanimous. Item C, budget. At this point, we'll entertain a motion to approve with whether you want to add firefighter potential funding or not.
I just have a question, Mr. O'Gorman. Ms. Moore, do we have to allocate the funds in order to proceed with the advertising and posting?
No, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Ms. Moore. Could you repeat that answer?
She said that we do not.
At this time, we take a motion to approve and then, how do you have a budget or what should we fund?
I would like to make a motion that we, um, approve the budget as recommended by Dr. Moore, um, Dr. Rice and Ms. Moore and, um, proceed with advertising and, uh, interviewing for the job, but, uh, not to move the funds until we have further discussion with the, uh, county based on the, uh, critical funding this year.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Rogers, I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Ms. uh, Knight, how do you vote? Ms. uh, Messick?
Aye.
Tetter?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Item D, budget amendment multiples. Do I have a motion to approve them as presented by Ms. Moore?
I make a motion to approve the multiple budget amendments, um, stated by Ms. Moore.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Rogers. Katie Tetter.
Thank you, Ms. Tetter. Ms. Knight, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
Aye.
Ms. Tetter?
Aye.
All right. So, it moves. All right. Information and announcements.
Mr. Rogers, you have in your packet there some, the dates, uh, again, as we know it today. Staff is supposed to return on August 10th. First day of school is August 17th. The early college is one week before that for everything there. The, uh, early college staff returns August 3rd and the first day of school would be August 10th. Uh, we have our, the next meetings, uh, have, uh, also been posted in your agenda there. We also included the ninth month PMR and some items on gov deals that we are selling, uh, below those threshold limits that require your approval, but we just, we have that in your packet as well for your information. And that concludes the information at this time.
All right. Thank you. Ninth month PMR. Did you discuss that?
I said it was in your packet. Yes, sir.
All right. Gov deals and calendars. Really touching. We just want to go through.
It's all under the threshold. It's all just for your information.
Perfect. All right. Mr. Johnson, I think you have something for, to read to us.
Mr. Chairman, under General Statutes 143, 318.11, subsections A1, A3 and A6, we need a motion for closed session to discuss matters required with state or federal law to be discussed in confidence for discussions with the board's attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to consider the qualifications or performance of a prospective or current employee of the Board of Education.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go in closed?
I make a motion to go into it closed. Cheryl Knight.
Do I have a second?
Second, Katie Tetter.
Thank you, Ms. Tetter. All those, uh, Ms. Knight, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tetter?
Aye.
All right. Good for Ms. Messick in the, not forgetting you, Pat. Just, we got out of, out of order. Uh, all right. We're closed. Do we need to, do we need to call on another line, or is this?
No, sir. We will end the live streaming and the recording and we will be able to monitor.